And as many are aware, in 2016, we discovered contamination around the fire station. That affected four wells immediately around the fire station that set up the standards for what at the time was 70 parts per trillion. Working in conjunction with the state, we put wells in those facilities.
Filters.
Yeah, filters, water filtration systems. As of October 1st of this year, the state has lowered the reportable and traceable amounts for PFAS to one of the most stringent in the state at this time. With that, it has affected other properties, up to 16 identified right now. We're all here to educate ourselves about PFAS and that. The town, in the meantime, has hired Chip Crisetti with Sanborn Head as a consultant, and Dave Alwine from Stentec has been here right along, working to do the testing for the town. As you're aware, it doesn't just affect the fire station, it's the Otardian Goss site, which has been, we don't know where that's going, it's affecting the Newton residents as well around Country Pond and that. And like I said, we're here to learn from the state where we're at, and then see where we're going to go from here. With that, I'll hand it over to the state DES.
So, good evening and welcome. My name's Mike Wimsat. I serve as Director of the Waste Management Division for New Hampshire DES. And at the request of Mr. St. James, who contacted me many, many weeks ago, he thought it'd be really helpful if we came and just kind of, we're going to start big, we're going to talk to you a little bit about what PFAS are, and what we've been learning about the distribution of them in the state, in groundwater and other media. And then narrow down a little bit to your neighborhood, and where we're seeing some sites that we're working on, including, you know, the fire station that Kevin has just described. So, thank you again for coming. I do want to acknowledge that Senator John Morgan is here, as well as Senator Sherman, right next to him. And of course, we have a select board members here. So, we're really pleased to have you. I also want to introduce our team here. So, to my right here is John Alley, who is a toxicologist at the state, who worked really hard on developing the standards that Kevin mentioned. Sarah Pillsbury, who's the Administrator of our Drinking Water and Groundwater Bureau. Robin Munjin, who heads up our Federal Sites Program and our Hazardous Waste Remediation Bureau. And Kate Emma Slusher, who's our Emerging Contaminants Section Head in the Hazardous Waste Remediation Bureau. So, a number of these folks are going to be speaking to you tonight. I'm really just going to try to fly really high here and give you an overview of what PFAS are, where we're seeing them, and then we'll get into the more specific presentations that these other folks are going to provide. So, with that, again, I'll be talking about that. Sarah's going to talk about the occurrence in drinking water, and what we've been learning about the occurrence around the state. And then Robin, and Kate Emma, and Dave Alwine, and Chip are going to talk about specific sites that we've been working on. So, as far as an overview goes, what are PFAS? Now, by now, I never know how much people are going to know, because if you follow the news, you might have heard this word or this acronym many, many times, or maybe you haven't heard about it before. So, starting really basic, PFAS are what are called per- and polyfluoral alkyl substances, which doesn't really tell you any more than when you heard the acronym. Basically, these are synthetic compounds that were first manufactured in the 1940s, and they have been used throughout industry and consumer products ever since then. And so, we do find them in many, many products. This kind of family tree here kind of gives you a sense that they're all related in one way or another, and they identify some of the key compounds. We're going to talk about four compounds that we set drinking, excuse me, drinking water standards for in just a moment. So, what are they used for? I'm not going to read all these, but as you can see, you can find them in all sorts of things. They've been, basically, the PFAS compounds that we've been dealing with, in many cases are used as surfactants. So, the one that's in firefighting foam was just really a really good surfactant, that's PFOS. And the one that we've been dealing with in Southern New Hampshire around the St. Gobain facility, around Merrimack and Litchfield and Bedford, you've probably seen that in the news. The primary contaminant there is PFOA, or what we call PFOA. And it is essentially uses surfactant in the raw materials that they use to coat fabrics with Teflon. So, as you can see, the list of uses is from everything very esoteric in industry to very common items like non-stick cookware and fast food containers and such. And I apologize, I'm losing my voice tonight, so I'm not, I'm going to try to talk as little as possible. The health effects that have been associated with exposure to PFAS include increasing cholesterol levels, increased liver enzyme levels. They can affect growth, learning, and behavior, so developmental effects. They can interfere with the body's natural hormones, so there's some endocrine effects there, and affect the immune system. And also, they can increase the risk of certain types of cancers. So, what have we been doing with PFAS? Now, I've got a timeline here that I think helps put into context how relatively new this is for us at DES. So, in 2009, EPA established provisional health advisory numbers. So, they weren't standards, they're just advisory recommendations for two compounds, PFOA and PFOS. And at that time, they weren't even really on our radar screen. So, we weren't looking for these, we weren't seeing them anywhere, there weren't really any readily available tests for them. There were some basic tests with higher detection limits that were starting to be available. So, around 2013 to 15, the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, which is a rule that's part of the Safe Drinking Water Act, said we ought to start looking for these compounds. So, certain water systems of a certain size, public water systems around the state were asked to sample for this, and started looking for it. And then, it really got on our radar screen in April of 2014, because PFOS was detected in a drinking water supply well at the Peace Trade Port, a well called the Haven Well. And so, that triggered a very significant response that was largely done by the Air Force as part of the Superfund Site on the Peace Trade Port. But then, if you fast forward to two years later, in the spring of 2016, PFOA was discovered in drink, in the drinking water system in Merrimack, as a result of what we later learned to be air emissions from the St. Gobain facility. So, from then on, that started just a, we've been working nonstop since then. We've learned so much about PFAS. We've learned that it exists in lots of places, we're detecting it in a lot of places. We had a very large response to get people connected to safe, clean drinking water in Southern New Hampshire as a result of those emissions. We discovered it at an additional facility that used to exist in Amherst with a similar air emission pattern. So, we've been working really hard on that since then. And during that time, right after we discovered it in March of 2016, we really encouraged EPA to develop something better than just the provisional health advisories that they had. And we knew that they had been doing that work, and then they kept working very quickly, and within a couple of months, they issued a new lifetime health advisory of 70 parts per trillion for both PFOA or PFOS, or the two in combination. And we adopted that through an emergency rule as an ambient groundwater quality standard in the state, so that we could use it to make decisions about how to clean up sites where groundwater had been contaminated. And then, Senate Bill 309, which was passed in the 2018 session, directed us to set standards for four compounds, PFOA and PFOS, as well as PFNA and PFHXS, which are two additional types, or two additional compounds. And we did that, the difference there was we had an ambient groundwater quality standard, which is a standard we use to do cleanups, to make decisions about site cleanups, but it doesn't directly require public water systems to sample. That's called a drinking water MCL. And so, Senate Bill 309 directed us to set a drinking water MCL. And we did that, and we, and we'll talk a little bit later how we did that, and Sarah's going to tell you a little bit about that process. So, I've just sort of talked through this slide, the first portion of it. The other thing that, two other things that Senate Bill 309 did for us, is that it directed us to start working on a budget and a plan and a schedule for setting a surface water quality standard. And it also directed, it made it clear that the agency now, even though we believe we had it before, this bill made it very clear that the agency had the authority to set, to regulate air emissions that might have an impact on groundwater quality, which was the method of release in Southern New Hampshire around St. Gobain. So, that bill was important to make clear of the agency's authority to regulate air emissions. So, since then, as I said, we've been working really hard on the impacted areas. We've been looking at drinking water quality in both public water systems and private wells in the five-town area around the St. Gobain facility, and in the area around the Amherst facility. But we've also been looking statewide at groundwater and drinking water. We've also looked at impacts on wastewater, and its presence in wastewater and sludge and biosolids, residuals from wastewater treatment. We've tested, and we see it in landfill leachate, because all the products that get disposed of in a landfill, many of them have PFAS in them, so it ends up in the leachate. And so, we've seen it, and we've gotten data from soil, from sediment and water bodies. We've done some limited fish sampling. It's been detected in loon eggs, so it gives you a sense that it's something that is just very pervasive in the environment, and it may not be danger, be, it may not be present at levels in groundwater that are at levels of concern, but you can often detect it, at least above the detection limits, in many, many places. And then, we've also looked at air associated with the St. Gobain facility, and in the stack residues associated with the emissions from that facility. So, the impacts, as I said, to groundwater quality are pervasive throughout the state. And this, I'm sure it's hard for you to see this here, but basically, the Pentagon-shaped symbols show samples. We've already obtained more than 6,500 groundwater samples since we started working on this about three years ago. So, there's a lot of data we've collected. And the star symbols indicate sites. And if you can see it, the purple stars are sites where we've detected PFAS in groundwater above the new ambient groundwater quality standards that we have. And so, you may have heard in the news that because of the really outsized impacts that these compounds have had in groundwater and media throughout the state, the agency felt it was, and the state felt it was appropriate to file suit against the manufacturer, these manufacturers of these compounds for the damages that these compounds have caused. So, that was, that suit was filed several months ago, and that will be proceeding as we speak. It will, it's not something that'll be resolved very quickly, those, that kind of litigation takes a long time. And then, I just wanted, as my last slide, I just wanted to show you, we have, since we started working on the St. Gobain incident back in 2016, we've had a really large web presence on our website to provide as much information and be as transparent as we can about the work that we're doing. So, there's a tremendous amount of information and data on our website, and we'll share this presentation with a select board, and they can share it with everyone, or you can just go to our website candidly. And right across the top of our homepage, there's a PFOA investigation button. You can hit that, and you'll get to these both archives for older documents, and a blog that we're updating frequently to try to give you an idea of what we're doing and what we've been doing with respect to investigating and addressing PFAS in New Hampshire. So, that's a really quick, high-flying overview of the problem. And what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Sarah Pillsbury, the Administrator of our Drinking Water and Groundwater Bureau, to talk to you more specifically about the impacts of drinking water in the state. Sarah?
Hi, everybody. So, what I'm going to do is just quickly talk about where people in New Hampshire get their drinking water from, talk about PFAS, talk about some of the other big concerns with drinking water, and then at the end, we're going to answer any questions people have, so. So, it's roughly half the people in New Hampshire get the drinking water that they need in their homes from private wells, and about half get it from public water systems. I imagine probably pretty much does everyone, raise your hand if you have a private well. Okay, so, that would make sense, Kingston, Newton, I am from Bo, and there, everybody's on a private well. There are places in the state, you know, Manchester, Portsmouth, and even some of the smaller towns that have public water systems. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about both. The standards that were set that Mike spoke of really are applied to public water systems. With private water systems, it's important to note that aside from drilling your well and some regulations about how you go about drilling a well, there are no regulations in terms of private wells. Everybody's on their own to understand that there could be some concerns in terms of water quality, both from naturally occurring contaminants like radon and arsenic, and in this, in this case, of course, impact from a man-made contaminant, PFAS. What I want to point out, and hopefully, if I've done my job at all, when I leave here, is that while PFAS is in this area, and things are being done to identify where it is, and to get it addressed in your home, there are other things. So, and you saw the map of all the places we've sampled. So, based on that map, we're thinking that when all is said and done, somewhere in the order of 7% to 9% of private wells may have detections of PFAS in them. You compare that to arsenic, which is 30% of the private wells in New Hampshire, or radon, which is 55% of the wells in New Hampshire, occurring at unhealthy levels. And so, one of the messages that I really hope to leave you with here is that you should, you need to test your private well. There's some testing being done certainly to identify PFAS, but there are other things with great certainty of health impacts, that it's also important to test your well for. How many folks here have tested their wells for things like arsenic and radon? Great, great. That's, I don't usually see that many hands go up, so that's wonderful. I did want to note that, under the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund, there is a study going on right now, is going to result in 500 samples being done statewide. And if you can kind of see in the background there, if you can see a grayish area, that shows you all of the private wells. And so, you know, you can really see that across New Hampshire, private wells play a huge role, whereas all the regulation is around public water systems. So, 500 samples are being taken in the more densely, in the places with more density of private wells, there'll be more samples than the places with less density. But this work is underway right now, and with, in less than a year, we will have the results and have a better understanding of both in terms of are there pockets of PFAS that we don't know about, but also, where are the real concentrations of things like arsenic over in the North Conway area, get high levels of fluoride, so that we can do some really targeted outreach in those areas. So, now, in terms of public water systems, there we're talking about any water system that serves more than 25 people for 60 days a year. And it goes from restaurants and camping areas that have to do some fairly limited testing, but routinely are testing their water, up from that to large workplaces, schools, and residential. And that could, that could go from a small condominium complex all the way up to the city of Manchester, which is our largest public water system. So, it's that, it's that water that's going into homes in New Hampshire, that it's being routinely tested, has to meet these new standards that Mike spoke about. And starting as of October 1st, between October 1st and December 30th, all of the public water systems that serve either communities or places like large workplaces and schools, non-transient water systems, all of them will need to sample for PFAS. So, that will be very, very telling. And again, based on what we've seen, it may be in the order of 7% to 9% of those sources that will be impacted by PFAS. So, these are the standards, they range from 11 to 18. We are the first state to have MCLs for this, all four of these PFAS compounds. And it's really important, because these four PFAS compounds are in the drinking water, are in our surface waters, and it was really important to make sure that we had good protective I also wanted to point out that if you look down below that at other state levels, that New Hampshire's particularly hard-hit on the PFAS front, as is Michigan, Minnesota, New York. And when you look at all of those states, they haven't yet set MCLs, but they're moving towards them, and they're right in the same, same area as our 11 to 18. So, no matter, you know, who's drinking the water from your tap, again, it's just so important to sample. If you haven't, if you're one of the few people that didn't seem to raise their hand when I asked, if you go and you Google "New Hampshire DES, private well testing," it's going to take you to a page, that'll tell you what you should test for, it will tell you where the labs are close to you that you could do that test. When you get your lab result back, we have what's called a Be Well Informed app, where you can put those results in, and it will provide you what will work for treatment, given your specific chemistry. You'll know that if you talk to vendors, that what they're saying will work is what we're saying will work, and nobody will be trying to cure things with magnets, for instance. And it also really, a lot of times, you, for instance, have to treat for iron before you can get to treating for the arsenic that's at unhealthy levels. So, with that, I'm going to pass it along to Robin Munjin.
Okay, so, these are the, some of the sites that we're going to talk about tonight, and let's see, my discussion is going to focus on the Otardian Goss site. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background on the site, for those of you that haven't heard us come here and talk about Otardian Goss. Basically, it was an operation where they did drum reconditioning operations at the facility from the 1950s to about 1980. Between 1980 and 1982, EPA did an emergency removal action, where they removed over 4,000 drums from the site. Then in 1983, it was listed on the National Priorities List, which means Superfund. So, that's when it became a Superfund site. And when it's, as a Superfund site, EPA is the lead agency, so we at DES are kind of in a support role. We do have someone from EPA here tonight, but I'll just go through the rest of this chronology. In 1984 to 85, there was an awful lot of work done at the site, a lot of soil was removed from the site, flammable sludge, flammable liquid. So, a lot of things happened in the 80s at this site. In 86, a remedial investigation and feasibility study was done, which basically tried to delineate all the areas where the contamination existed, and then look at alternatives for treatment and remediation. In 1987, EPA issued what's called a Record of Decision, and basically, that document decided what the cleanup remedy was going to be at the site. And along the way, some changes were made in 1999 and 2002, and then they actually did what's called an amended Record of Decision in 2007. In 89, there was a lot of soil remediation work done, so that, all that work was completed in 89. The building was demolished in 94. Some underground storage tanks were disposed of off-site. There was a little bit of additional soil and sediment remediation done in 2001 and 2002. And then, in between 2008 and 2010, we did three rounds of what we call in situ chemical oxidation injections, and basically, these chemicals were injected into the ground that destroyed the contamination. So, that happened over a three-year period. In 2012, the town adopted this groundwater management zone overlay district, which restricts the use of groundwater in that area, so nobody's drinking the water in that, in that zone. And then, there were some significant monitoring events that occurred in 2015 and 2018 to evaluate how effective those ISCO injections were back in, back through 2008 and 2010. So, now, we get into the PFAS aspects of the site. We started sampling at the site for PFAS in 2018 with just a few select wells in and around the source area at the site. I think in April, we came here, EPA presented some of that information in April. Then, we met, EPA and DES met with the Country Pond Lake Association in May, and we provided some of that data at that meeting. We did a lot of sampling in May, June, and August. We sampled groundwater, surface water, and drinking water, and then we presented some of that information here in July. We didn't have all the data, so I'm going to present some of that new data that was collected in August tonight. And then, in September this year, basically, what happened is EPA typically funds these sites like 90%, 10%, so the state, for about 10 years, covers about 10% of the costs. And then, in 20, in September of this year, the O&M transitioned to 100% state funding, so we are now on the hook for most of what's left going on at the site. So, this is a site plan, it's kind of hard to see, but the, this zone right here that's highlighted is what we call the groundwater management zone. So, that's the area where groundwater use is restricted until we meet cleanup levels. And then, the colors didn't come out too good, but all the green dots are meet standard, the new standard, the standards for the four PFOS compounds that we just set new standards for. So, you can see at the perimeter, a lot of our wells meet standard at the boundary of the groundwater management zone. This is a, this is a, excuse me?
Does the fog show some of your lights?
Yeah, it was kind of hard to see that slide.
Somewhere back there, can you shut one of the lights, maybe?
So, again, the green dots represent where we meet standard. So, at the edges of the GMZ, you can see that, for the most part, we're meeting standards on the edges. There's a couple of spots here that we don't meet standards, so we're going to have to evaluate either expanding the groundwater management zone, or something of that nature. We haven't discussed that with EPA at this point, but that's something that we'll have to look at. So, this is a map of all the drinking water wells that we've sampled, and this has been expanded since the last time we were here in July. All the green dots represent wells that are below our standard or are non-detect. And then, we have one well right here that exceeds our new standard. So, all the sampling that we did, we only found one exceedance, and that well is actually offline, so there's nobody using that water right now. So, that's kind of just an update from July, where some of these outer wells hadn't been sampled, and we've gone out in a little bit more broader area and collected those samples. So, we feel pretty good about the amount of water supply well sampling that we've done, the fact that we only see one, one exceedance, and nobody's actually drinking that water right now, so. And then, in surface water, these numbers are going to be really difficult to read, but there were two rounds of data collected. I'm just trying to think if this was, the first round, I think, was in May, and then we collected another round in August. So, the August data is in the gray boxes, and the May data is in the white boxes. And basically, we're not seeing any concentrations in surface water that exceed one of the common, well, let's see, let me rephrase that. Right now, we don't have a screening level or a surface water standard to apply at this site, but EPA has used a screening level for surface water at another Superfund site of 760 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS, and we're well below those numbers at this site. So, you know, we feel pretty good about the surface water data, the concentrations in the pond are very, very low. And then, we see some of these concentrations, I think most of them are below 200. I think there might have been like a 180 or a 150 up in here, but the levels are quite a bit lower than a screening level that was used at another Superfund site. And like Mike said before, you know, we're working on a surface water standard for the state of New Hampshire, we don't have one yet, so we really, at this site, don't have a number to compare these values to. But because we have a screening level at another Superfund site, we feel very, very comfortable about our work here, and the levels are, don't even approach those, so. Just some contact information, again, Robin Munjin, I'm here, I represent the Federal Sites Program. Michael Summerlin couldn't be here tonight, he's actually the project manager for this site for DES. And Melissa Taylor is the Chief of the Superfund Section at EPA, so she is the current contact for EPA for this site. So she is the current contact for EPA for this site. And I'll pass it along to Kate Emma.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? All right. So Robyn introduced this map. And I just want to say, earlier, Mike also introduced a link to our PFAS webpage. On there, there is a link to a map and you can see this map for yourself. You can zoom. Sorry. You can zoom all over the state of New Hampshire to see where PFAS data have been collected in groundwater. We tried to show Kingston and Newton here. I'm going to talk about a couple of these sites. I know the Bodwell Septage Facility is not in Kingston. It's East Kingston. But I know there have been public meetings and interest in that. So I just want to show where that was relative to what we're talking about today. The John's Truck and Auto is a site that's sampled for other contaminants. And they did do some screening for PFAS. And the great news is, the samples that were reported, concentrations were less than the current standards. I'm going to talk about the two landfills and then go to the fire department. So here in New Hampshire, we've asked all of our landfills to screen for PFAS and groundwater. And we have a couple hundred online landfills throughout the state. Most of those are closed and capped facilities. And there's a lot of information on this slide. But what I want to show you is, there's 163 landfills have sampled and reported to DES. And what we're showing on this slide with the different colors, I guess, each bar represents a sample at a site. And each of the colors in that bar represent the highest concentration of one of the four compounds that we regulate. And it's just there with the concentrations in parts per trillion. You can see, you know, there is one online landfill that has concentrations in the 7,000 part per trillion range, all the way down to where you can see Kingston landfill over there on the right, where monitoring wells have only shown a couple, single-digit parts per trillion, like five parts per trillion in those monitoring wells. The Newman landfill does have relatively higher concentrations in the monitoring wells. I understand that there is one drinking water well that has been impacted. And the project manager at DES has been talking to the town about having that well, getting some confirmatory sampling and doing some additional sampling at some of the abutting properties to make sure that no one else is drinking any impacted water. Here in New Hampshire, you know, as we talked about earlier, there's private drinking water wells all over the state. Many of our fire stations here in New Hampshire have private drinking water wells at the fire station or nearby that public facility. One of the big concerns that we have right now is ATRF, that aqueous film-forming foam, the firefighting foam that can be used. The firefighting foam has really high concentrations of PFAS in the raw, the concentrated material. And we're concerned that if some of that ATRF is released, then maybe there's a potential to impact drinking water quality. So you can see to date, there's been roughly 66 wells that have been sampled in New Hampshire at fire stations or next to fire stations. And just a few of those wells actually exceed our ambient groundwater quality standards. And you can see Kingston is one, showed there, Site 5. There has been some sampling in Newton, too, with very low level to non-detect concentrations of PFAS found there. So just to put Kingston in perspective, there are the detacs in the drinking water. And we'll talk about it in another slide. But relative to other sites that have used this ATRF, this foam, Kingston does not have the highest concentrations. And so there are 20 sites right now around New Hampshire that are being investigated, looking at soil and groundwater quality to see what kind of impact this ATRF use has had. And you can see concentrations at some of these facilities are really, really high, all the way here on the left, to the extent that you couldn't actually see Kingston's levels at this scale on this drawing. So I'm sure many of you are familiar, guessing living around here, with the fire station investigation. I just want to give a little bit of a timeline of how DES has been involved at the site. So back in 2016, we were in a drought. And the town had offered the use of the water from the fire station's well for public consumption. So given all the developments and all of us learning about PFAS in New Hampshire's water quality, New Hampshire DES collected a sample from that well. And unfortunately, the results came back and the concentrations were above the old groundwater quality standard. So 70 parts per trillion for PFOA was in our standard. And the results were at, I think, about 140 parts per trillion in that drinking water. So DES then worked and tried to reach out to many of the abutting properties to have their wells sampled. And what you can see here on the map, this is a map from 2016, with the first round of sampling collected at private residences. And so the color scale that you're looking at is actually, the red and the purple are greater than the 70 parts per trillion, knowing that we do have new standards in place now.
You need to go to a microphone.
We're going to have questions after. If we could just have her to the presentation.
And then we'll have another map, too, in a minute. So, and this map at that time was a result pending. So there was a sample collected when this map was developed and the lab hadn't reported the data yet. So this is an older map. But I just put it up here to say, when DES came and first talked to the town in early 2017, this is what we thought could be the potential extent of the problem. We've asked the town to take responsibility for investigating and remediating impacts associated with ATRF releases that would be associated with fire activities. So we will have time for questions. And I definitely want to answer this, but I will say that the way that we, we, as in New Hampshire, the way the rules are set up here in New Hampshire, the responsible party hires a professional, a professional engineer or geologist to go out and do the investigation. They submit the documents to DES and then DES reviews them to see if they're in conformance with the rules that we work from. And I guess if we want to comment more after that, we can, we can take it at the end. So this prompted essentially in early 2017, the town to start the investigation, to look at the site, to see what the extent of the contamination would be, and then look to see how large that plume in groundwater is. Where is it going and do we have the extent of it? So what I want to do now is pass the baton over to the town's consultants to highlight some of the findings from that site investigation that came into DES in 2018. And then the findings of the additional water sampling that's been done. And then the requests relative to the new standards that are now in place.
There's Mike.
You can get right next to it.
This is an updated version of the figure that Kate Emma was talking about with the most recent data right through September, right Dave?
Yes.
Right through September. And the color code here now reflects the new lower standards, right? The 11 to 18 parts per trillion standards. So as you can see, there's a lot more red dots. And the town has had StanTech, working under Dave, do the sampling of, how many wells total? Maybe 70? Something like that?
Yeah, pretty much everything listed on there.
So.
Probably close to.
Yeah, a very large number of wells. And we have a pretty good sense for the extent of contamination, but there are some areas where you'll see red dots without any other color outside of them. And those are areas where the town may be having Dave's company samples in additional wells in that area to confirm if we've met the extent of contamination or not. Also, too, the Board of Selectmen on Monday night decided to provide potable water, bottled water, to 16 or 17 additional residences. Folks who don't have the point-of-entry treatment systems, I don't know who in the room has point-of-entry treatment systems, but if you have one of those, you're not going to get bottled water because those systems clean the water. But there's another 16 or 17 wells that don't have those systems. And those are the residences that will get the bottled water. And I think that's supposed to start next week. Talked to vendors, Menadnoc, is that just going to be doing it?
Yep.
So Menadnoc's going to be doing that starting next week. And as I said, the next step, and the exact details of it, we still need to work out. The Board of Selectmen still need to approve. But that next step is going to include stepping out and sampling more residential wells. So some of the folks in this room that haven't had their wells tested, but they're close by, you may be getting a request to have your well tested. And I think those are kind of the main points. The specifics of what wells, we have not decided yet. And the board hasn't made that decision yet. So we need to do that. And once we get more of the board together, we think next week, we'll be able to make that decision. I think that's, again, not everyone here is from the board. So the whole board isn't here right now. But I think that's our plan. And we can then get that to Kate Emma and the rest of the folks at the state to review. And then StanTech, under Dave Ilwam, will go out there and sample the wells and see what we find. I think that's the plan right now.
Okay, so that's the end of the formal presentation for tonight. We really just thought it would be helpful to get some basic information out there about, you know, the overview materials, as well as some of these specific sites. But we're really here and happy to answer your questions. So I think, if I understand, probably what they'd like you to do is go up to that mic over there so that people can hear you and so they can get it for the recording. And then we'll just, you know, basically you can address your question and we'll figure out who's the best person that's in a position to answer it. So I don't know if you have a formal process for doing that or if you.
Well, before we do that, if I can ask Mr. Crichetti to explain when we talk 11 parts per trillion, if you could define that for us?
Well, it's a very small number. I mean, a part per trillion. One way to think about it is, the entire Earth's population is 7 billion people. So one person out of that 7 billion is a little over 100 parts per trillion. So we're talking about one part per trillion. So it's a very small number.
So 11 parts per trillion would be equivalent to one drop of water in five Olympic swimming pools?
Very large pool, yes. Yeah, it's a small number. Actually, I haven't done the calculation, but it's a drop in a huge body of water. Part of the concern is, you know, the toxicology of these compounds isn't known really well. And I'm sure DES can talk about that better. But there's still a lot of studies going on. And these numbers that have been developed have been developed based upon, you know, being safe, being secure about public health. And, you know, if anything, they are intended to be conservative and be protective of people's health.
The other thing I'd like to point out is, as far as PFAS and PFAS, it's all proprietary information in the chemicals of products that are used. For instance, would be resolved carpet cleaner. We all tend to use it if you have any pets or anything. Without having the exact numbers, unless someone can tell me differently, when you get a 22-ounce bottle of resolved carpet cleaner, roughly 16% of that is PFOA material.
Well, I know, yeah, if you look at a lot of the foams, in fact, we got the MSDS sheets for some of the ATRF foams. And they don't have a lot of information on them. So it's hard to track the specifics of just what the specific compounds are in those foams. I know there's some, but it is hard to track exactly what's there unless you actually analyze the foam that was used.
So when you look at, like, at the fire station, they did use foam when that's a well-known contaminant. Then when you look at bodwells, that is other people's septic system. So unbeknownst to us, I mean, it's in caffeinated products, it's, you know, substitute sugars. We are theoretically contaminated in our own septic systems of everything that we found to drink. With that, I'd like to open up, if anyone has any questions. We have the people here, so let's go right over here first, if you don't mind standing up. Yep, you don't have to state your name or anything, just ask your question.
Kate Michael's a selectman in New Hampshire. So thank you very much for putting this together. I just, a couple of questions. I thought you mentioned you have new results for the sampling around Country Pond, but I, did I see them tonight and miss them?
Robyn, do you want to take that?
I know some of the sites, you were still waiting for results.
Were you interested in drinking water or just groundwater monitoring?
Some of the surface samples, because I know Newton, you know, this is very close to Country Pond where our children are swimming.
Right, right.
I'm sure everyone's doing their best, but it's, the people are pretty concerned and.
Right, these are the samples that we collected from surface water.
I can't really see that.
So this is the edge of Country Pond here. There's a campground here. We collected one at that beach. There's, did a Boy Scout camp or something?
Yeah, there's a camp.
Yeah, there's another beach down here where we collected a sample. And then we collected a sample at the mouth of the brook that runs through the wetland.
That's Berry Brook? Is that Berry Brook?
No.
No, which is the?
Bill Street?
Which is the brook? Mindy, what's that brook? I can't remember the name of the brook, but I know we were concerned about it because.
Right.
It fed into the pond.
This brook generates, or comes, there's a North Brook and a South Brook and it runs through this wetland and discharges to Country Pond. And we've sampled that. We sampled all along it.
Right.
And as I mentioned, the concentrations that we detected are less than the EPA screening level that was set at a different Superfund site. We don't have a screening level at this Superfund site, but the level that was set for the Cokely landfill, Superfund site, was 760 parts per trillion for PFOA or PFAS. And these numbers are much, much lower than.
Yeah, like 180, I think, was the highest.
Yeah, and that was up in the wetland, yeah.
Okay, so, but just so I'm clear, all the most recent results are in?
Are on this figure.
Because it was earlier this summer, we didn't have them.
Right, right, because we said we would collect another sample in a drier time of year so we could look at different hydrologic conditions. So the gray data is the August data.
Okay.
And white data is, I think it was May, but.
And I know some of the towns, but when you say surface collection, are you doing it literally on the surface? Is there a definition of what that means, how deep you go? Does that impact the numbers you're going to see?
Well, basically, when we sampled in the spring, we sampled at multiple depths. We sampled right at the surface of the water. We sampled down at about, I can't see these numbers either, 2.5 feet and 4.5 feet.
2.5 and 4.5.
So when we collected the second round of data in August, we just took a sample from the top because we were under the impression that a lot of these compounds can foam on the surface of waters. So we felt that because we didn't see any stratification the first time we sampled, in other words, there was no difference in the depth, we felt comfortable sampling the second time around, just from the surface.
Okay, so, but there's still, it's not known the impact of PFAS on human skin. I mean, you don't ingest them. But do we have any studies that show that it's safe to be swimming in water at certain standards yet?
I'm not a risk assessor, I couldn't possibly answer that.
Hi, I'm John Nally, toxicologist with DES. So we are looking at, right now, can everyone hear me now? A little better, sorry. So we are in the process of internally reviewing and finishing up screening levels. With PFAS, the main way that these get into the human body is through ingestion. That's why we set a drinking water standard, because if these are in your water, it's very easy for that small part per trillion level to accumulate to a part per billion level.
Right.
So that's our primary concern, is drinking water. With looking at a surface water standard and the plan that we're working on, we are reviewing that information to understand, does this present a significant risk to contact with skin? And most of the evidence that's out right now doesn't suggest that there's a significant risk for absorption through skin. There's some minor amount that may make it through, but relative to the external amount, your skin's pretty resistant to absorbing PFAS through it. But we still are going to do an assessment to determine what would be that safe surface water number. But most likely, the safer number, the lower number that we would be looking at is whatever it's going to take to protect fish for consumption. Because just like these can accumulate from parts per trillion in the environment to parts per billion in your body, they can do the same thing in fish.
So you're probably going to be testing fish eventually?
Yes, we are looking for that. And that is one of the things of developing a surface water plant. We will need to sample for that, and that is an important consideration for us.
I know it's a lot of work. I just, I'd love some more transparency and information to Newton because I found out about this event through like a third party. So I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I don't know if we can talk to Jim.
Just if you could make sure we have better communication. And that's actually good. And I just wanted to, I couldn't get, you know, I really want to thank, there's some people in the audience who are on the task force, our Senator Tom Sherman, and Mindy Mesmer, who helped my town tremendously getting this word out there, so we have lower standards. I want to acknowledge them and the work they're doing. Thank you so much.
Is there any type of filtration system in something like Brita pitchers, filters for your refrigerators, filters on your house, or a filter system on a community water system which will remove PFAs and PFO?
Yes.
Do you want to take that, Sarah?
The answer is yes, which is why they've done point of entry on homes that were impacted. The answer is yes. The only good news about PFAS is that it's pretty, it's relatively quite easy to treat for it. Not inexpensive, but easy.
Just to be clear, typically that treatment is what we call granulated activated carbon or GAC. And that can be done on a small scale in a home. It can be done on a large scale at a large public water systems, providing, you know, thousands of gallons per day. But as Sarah said, the answer is yes. It definitely can be treated effectively.
You need to come to Microphones. We're on TV and they can't hear it all if you don't.
Can you just clarify for folks, it's Brita and home filters aren't standard for treating PFAS?
Sure, that's a good point. So there are a lot of sort of filters you can buy, you know, a pitcher and that sort of thing that has a carbon filter in it. And those filters may have some effectiveness, but we've not really, and just correct me if I'm wrong, we've not evaluated those to determine that if you have PFAS at a certain concentration and you use a Brita filter, that it will effectively and routinely and consistently remove that PFAS to a level below the standard. So we don't recommend that as a permanent solution. We think if you have PFAS in your water and you're going to get some kind of professional treatment of that water in your home, which you can do it both through granulated activated carbon or through reverse osmosis, which is also a technology that you can use in your home. But we would recommend that you drink bottled water until you get, if you're concerned and you have PFAS in your water above the standard and you want to have clean water, you really should be trying to get an effective engineered system that will treat it properly and then use bottled water until you get that. We don't recommend using a Brita filter as a permanent solution for treating PFAS, because we just can't know. There's so many variables there, depending on what you have for contamination, what other things are in your water, you know, how frequently you change a Brita filter. So if you get, if you contract with somebody to provide a treatment system in your home, then you know what you're supposed to do to maintain it, and you can make sure that it's working. And it usually comes with a sample to make sure that it's actually being treated effectively, so you're sure you're getting clean water for your family. And if you have any questions about that specifically, Sarah's program has staff who are just so capable in this area, and they can tell you more than you ever wanted to know about home treatment and make sure that you get, you know, set on the right path for getting treatment properly installed in your home. We encourage you to reach out to her staff if you have questions about that.
Hi, I tiptoes, but I just want to add that website that we showed the link to or Mike referenced that you can get to, there is a section, it talks about treating your drinking water. So you can go there too, and there's more contact information for the ES Saris staff. That one, right there on the left, under it says New Hampshire PFAS Investigation. Right underneath that, it says PFAS in drinking water. And so if you're on a computer or a phone, you can go there and it'll give you more information about treatment.
So drinking it, but what about cooking with it?
Cooking with it.
Cooking with the water?
Sure. And I'll let John add anything. But typically, we think of cooking with water as in the same category as drinking water. So if you're not drinking your water because you get the contaminant, you shouldn't cook with it either. You should use treated, safe drinking water for all your both consumption and cooking. So treat it the same way as if you were drinking it out of a glass. Yes, Mindy?
Mindy Mesmer, thanks for doing this tonight. But I think it would be helpful if Jonathan could sort of run through what's known about the health effects right now and what was the basis for some of the work that you did and the standards, so that people understand what those health effects are.
Sure. You want to do that, John?
Yeah. So the issue with PFAS is that they're associated with certain chronic health outcomes. So what happens if you're exposed to these chemicals from your environment, whether it's through your water or your food or possibly other sources, they get into your body and they will accumulate. And that's a really important thing that we have to consider when setting these numbers, because understandably, a part per trillion is a really low number. But when these chemicals get into your body, they can stay in your body for a long time. So when I think of a chemical like arsenic, if you ingest arsenic from your drinking water or shellfish or other sources where we can get arsenic in our diet, arsenic will leave your body in about two to four weeks. Some of these PFAS chemicals can take two to four years, which is a very long time. So a little bit in your environment becomes a lot in your body if you drink it for a very long time. So considering that, we had to go through and look at what these may be doing to people's health. And the CDC, Center for Disease Control in the US, is looking into this right now with several studies going on across the country. But there's concern that these may be affecting people's ability to handle lipids, so things like your total cholesterol levels. They may be also having some effects on the immune system. And one of the particular things that they're worried about is sort of a suppressed response to vaccines. Now, I'm going to be very clear, no study has shown that there is a failure of vaccines. So no one is going out and getting vaccinated, and there is a case where the vaccine is not working. What they're seeing is a sort of a weakened response. And I kind of use a slightly off analogy. Imagine you're going to go by a home, and you go through and you do the inspection and you see water marks on the ceiling and on the wall. Does that mean the house is going to collapse on you right now? No. But it's very concerning, because there could be a lot of other issues happening with that. And that's what we look at with a lot of these effects of PFAS, so things that may be affecting your cholesterol, your immune system, fertility in women, liver function seems like a very likely effect of these. So when we set our standards, we look for what were the most sensitive of these effects? How do we account for how long these might be staying in people's body? And the other thing that we had to look at was the fact that these can actually transfer from both mother to fetus. So the placenta does not stop these from crossing. So even at a very low parts per trillion level, they can accumulate into fetal tissues. And going on from that, these can also cross into breast milk. So by setting these low standards at a part per trillion level, this isn't about protecting the, not just the entire population, so everyone in this room, in this town, in this state, it's also considering those very sensitive life stages. Because whatever is parts per trillion in the drinking water can become parts per trillion at a much higher level in a mother's breast milk. So in order to account for that, we set these low levels. Does that answer any other questions about that, since I'm up here and we're still on that topic? So the C8 is another acronym for PFAS, because there's not enough acronyms with all of this. And that was from a town in West Virginia where there was a large factory that was basically manufacturing Teflon, Teflon products, and they emitted this into the drinking water. The concentrations there were very high, up at the parts per billion. So we're talking parts per trillion. They were up in the parts per billion level. And as a result, there was a lawsuit against the company. As part of the settlement from that, they funded a very large study of over 60,000 people from this community in West Virginia. That study found some associations between one of these chemicals, PFOA, and certain health effects. And that's one of the reasons that there's been a lot of concern about these chemicals going on the past couple of years, was some of those findings in such a large population supported, you know, this is raising some flags and we need to reduce people's exposure to these chemicals. Anything else?
Concentrated, you're testing in Kingston. Are you going to other towns within the state? Are you going to Newton, for instance, especially with the Superfund site?
Sure. Well, so our response to the PFAS problem has been widespread. We've looked, you know, as we learned more about the occurrence of the compound and what products and processes it was used in, we went out and started doing, in addition to a very sort of outsized effort looking at drinking water wells around the St. Cobain facility, we also went and looked, we learned that, for example, that it was used as a fume suppressant in chromium plating. So we looked at our data records and looked at wherever anybody did chromium plating. And we went out and tried to look at those facilities and sample wells around those facilities to see if we saw evidence of contamination. And in fact, in a couple of cases, we did. Similarly, with fire departments, we knew that many fire departments either at least trained with or actually used in firefighting these PFAS-containing firefighting foams. And we understood that what happens in many cases, that even though they may not have a release of it, just like a spill or something at the fire station, the standard is that they go out and they train with this, they come back to the fire station, and every good firefighter knows you got to clean all your equipment, you got to clean the inside and outside of your hoses. So that kind of work would be done at the fire station. So the residues from doing a training with foam, or actually fighting a fire with foam, would then be washed off of the firefighting equipment at the station. And that's why we see at a number of stations, we're seeing the evidence of releases. So we're looking there. So we're looking at fire departments across the state, we looked at fire training facilities across the state. Sarah's program has done, even before it became an MCL, a tremendous amount of voluntary sampling or asking public water systems across the state to sample their systems. So we've identified contamination in drinking water and groundwater at lots of places around the state from a variety of different sources. So we are looking in lots of places. And I confess, I don't know exactly what we've done in Newton. I don't know Kate Emma or Sarah, if you know what work we've done in Newton.
Yeah, so what we've done is we've asked any site, any property that's had a release of, you know, a petroleum, not necessarily a petroleum product, but like some other chemical at their site. So they're already being reviewed and evaluated, sorry, I'm on my tiptoes, reviewed and evaluated through our program. We've asked all of those, from the transfer stations, the landfills, to screen their groundwater for PFAS. And we have data from more than 400 sites across the state. In Newton, if we go, do we have the clipper? The sites that have screened, bear with me here. So the sites that have screened, I tried to just zoom in. So this is the whole state. So anywhere that you see a dot, that's where a groundwater sample's been collected. And so I know there's the landfill that I mentioned, and there are samples around the landfill and then some residential sample. That's the purple star down below. But I don't, other than the other green dot down to the southwest, I don't think there's other properties in Newton that are included in the waste site screening right now. And one thing that I can say, sorry, one quick thing, is even though we're seeing these PFAS detections at many sites, there's an awful lot of green dots out here, too. So we can't lose sight that even though we do see, you know, some high concentrations near sites that have used these chemicals and had a release, right? Just because I have a Teflon pan at my house doesn't necessarily mean that I've spilled Teflon all over the lawn, you know, when I go outside or something. So just because somebody uses these PFAS at their site doesn't mean they've necessarily spilled them. You know, they might have just put them in the trash receptacle as they should have. So you see a lot of green dots in those areas where we don't see these elevated groundwater impacts. Right. So at this time, unless there's some other site in our program, we don't have a widespread sampling effort going on. If there are any other sites, though, that you know of that might be in our program, let us know. We'd appreciate that. Any remediation site that's in our, here in our state. I'm just trying to think, you know, like a dry cleaner. I'm not familiar as much with Newton. You know, I know it's not a lot of industry, but... So if you have a particular concern, we could certainly, you know, we can talk offline, you know, and go over some of those sites. That would be great. Thanks.
One thing I would add, just to make sure we provide some context here. You know, when I first started opening up this discussion tonight, I told you that it's widespread. We find it in a lot of places. But I don't want that to be translated to, well, it's just everywhere, so we should give up. Because that's not the case. If you listen to Sarah's presentation, you know, we've sampled over 6,500 groundwater samples in New Hampshire since this started unfolding. I'll get, I'm sorry, I'll get to you in just a moment. I'm not talking about Newton here, but I'll come back to you. So what I wanted to just emphasize is that, you know, with all the sampling we've done, keep in mind, a lot of those samples were targeted because we thought there would be a problem there. It was near a fire station, it was near a plating facility, or it was near something that we thought might be a potential source for PFAS. But we also just went sampling a lot of places for a lot of different reasons, the public water systems or what have you. And now we're doing this 500 sample statewide initiative that is not targeted towards potential sources. It's essentially trying to be random. We're finding it about, we're detecting it in about 9% of the wells that we test. That means that 90% of the wells we're testing, we don't detect it. So the idea, it's important to think that doesn't, just because, yes, it's in a lot of products and it might well be detectable in your septic, you know, the material that's pumped out of your septic tank, it doesn't mean that it's having an adverse impact on groundwater quality everywhere. In fact, it's not. In most places, we're not seeing that effect. So I think it's important just to keep it into context. It does mean that there are lots of potential sources that can cause a groundwater problem, but it doesn't mean because it's been used in the past so frequently in so many different products that we're going to find it in groundwater everywhere, because we don't. So I just want people to sort of help put that in context, because it's easy to kind of make one conclusion or another. Now, with respect to Newton, I think that, you know, the Superfund site, we have, you know, that's a site that's been in our system for a long time. It's been studied well. Obviously, the presence of PFAS there is a relatively new piece of information for us. So, and that's happened, we have 20 Superfund sites in the state, so we're sampling at all those sites for PFAS. And it does, in some cases, mean that we have to expand our look, depending on what we find. But in general, I think you can be, rest assured that we're looking at where we think there would be a need or a concern for sampling, and we're requiring, if it's a responsible party site, then we would ask the responsible party to do it. If it's a state lead or a federal lead site, then we would do it. But we are looking at, and I would encourage you to reach out to our staff offline. If you have specific concerns about particular areas, we'd be happy to discuss those with you and try to help you understand that. Senator?
We'll find out for you. I just wanted to comment that if you have a specific question, I'll give you my card before you go, and we'll get that answered for you, because Newton is in my district. I also wanted to just address some of what Mike was saying. The legislature has been responding as quickly as we possibly can to PFAS. I've been working on this with Mike since about 2014. We have a cancer cluster up in my hometown of Rye, and out of that came a lot of the knowledge that we have about PFAS in New Hampshire. But what the legislature has been doing is, we've heard a lot about triple F, which is firefighting foam. And this year, I filed a bill, Senator Morgan helped me with that. And that bill actually virtually eliminates the use of triple F in the state of New Hampshire, one of only two or three states in the country that have put this kind of restriction on the use. Almost every fire, unless it's a specific type of chemical fire, or a fire at an Air Force base or an airport, can be extinguished with water and non-chemical means. It allows firefighters to use triple F if they absolutely have to. If they use it, it becomes a toxic cleanup site, so that the... If they use it, it becomes a toxic cleanup site so that the exposure is limited to residents. And on top of that, any training is now done with non-PFOA containing compounds. So if you have questions about what the legislature is doing to respond to this contamination, reaching out to either Senator Morgan or me and we can get you the answers you need in addition to reaching out to DES. It's going to be a big issue for the state. Mike and I serve on the Drinking Water, Groundwater Trust Fund Advisory Commission. We have money left over from the MTBE settlement, which is funding all that work. But the reason why suit was brought is because the amount of contamination from this compound is way beyond what we saw with MTBE. So the need for funding, that it, the cleanup should not be on the backs of taxpayers who didn't do this in the first place. That's why MTBE, we went after Exxon, tobacco, we went after the tobacco companies and following the same mantra, when there's a contamination, the responsible parties that manufactured this material has known about the toxicity since the early 1960s at least. And they continue to sell and profit from it. And by the way, they still are. If you look at your, anything that contains Teflon has some of these compounds in it. So just to let you know that the legislature is responding, the state is responding across the board to this contamination. And if you have specific questions and you're not getting answers, please feel free to reach out to us as well. Thanks.
I think it's great that we have this fine team here and I'm glad that a room from a town has showed up so concerned. And I just, the question I guess is, looking at this map and trying to find a solution rather than, you know, complaining about the situation. If you look at that, at that map, the amount of money it would take to, you know, put filtration on all of those houses and maintain all that filtration over all of those years, has anyone considered putting in a municipal water system for small downtowns? Is that on the map?
That's why we've hired consultants, is that's part of what they're going to do is tell us which way to go.
Well, you're ahead of me again.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
One thing before we start breaking up is, can I just have a show of hands, how many people are from Kingston? How many are from Newton? Okay. How many are from other, other, not counting you guys?
What I would like to point out, highlight, is we talked about filtration systems. It's not where you can just go to one company and have one put in your house and be done with it. It has to be done in conjunction with testing for what is in your water. It's not a one system fits everyone's. So I just, I hope everyone understands, you have to work with a testing company to make sure you're extracting the PFAS, not just iron or anything else that's in the water. Any other questions?
I guess I'm, I guess I'm on a long time around here, I'll be 86 my next, next birthday. And I worked very hard years ago in this town to stop the Otardie Goss site. And it fell on deaf ears in our management of this town. They didn't want to lay off the people and start paying them minimum wage working there because they didn't want to put 15 people out of work. However, if we paid them $1,000 an hour for 100 years, it wouldn't even come one fraction of what it's cost to clean that site up. Because administration of this town refused back then. They really fought and fought and fought. And one of the people that were in administration of that town lived near the site. And that's one of the contaminated areas that just showed up here. So the big problem here is, you have a, a problem, then you try to get somebody to clean it up. And they look the other way because right now in this town, I'm looking at this site here and I, my house is in the other, in southern end of town and it's not even on that map. And now where I am, it borders the Plastow. And there's a river that comes out of Kingston, it's called Bayberry Brook. And it's, it's a spring-fed brook. And one of the contractors in this town diverted that brook. The EPA just went after him five, six years ago and they kept it out of the papers, but it did get in Lawrence Eagle Tribune. He was fined $750,000 for contamination and so forth. But the people in this town don't even know about it. It's one of your big contractors, South Kingston, and he looks, all the people look the other way. Well, the problem is this. The best way to prevent a problem is clean it before you get to it. I worked for a big company called West Electric years ago and they're one of the biggest employees. We paid, employed 50,000 people at one point. And that's a heck of a lot of people. However, when they built a new plant, they moved people from Lawrence and Andover into the new plant, not, not the Andover. They built a sewage plant big enough for 5,000 people. But when you get, I'm sorry, 15,000 people dumping sewage into 5,000 rated Clarajester. And I brought that subject up here to some selectmen in town and the selectman says, "You bring these big terms, Clarajester, what's that?" They were on the health board. They didn't even know what a sewage treatment plant was called. This is the problem. We have to get more educated people in this town that know the difference between a bacteria and a virus and the difference between sewage and sludge. And this is, this is going to keep going on and on and on. And we can't keep having people look the other way because they keep it out of the papers and they don't know one of the biggest contaminants is on the south end of town on an aquifer. And which also goes in the Plastow. And having owned property at Lake River Sockeye, I own a place at Meredith Bay. I'll, I'll go back a while in New Hampshire. Most people don't realize, I mean, I'm at River Sockeye at Weas Beach.
Sir, I agree, and if you have a specific question, but just so you know, there's no one turning their back right now. First, these people over here are not going to let us turn our backs. And that's why the board sitting here right now, I, Chip Crassetti, and Sanborn Head and work with STNCAC to figure out the best solution possible for the town. We're not turning our back, but do you have a specific question, sir?
Well, the big question is, who's going to enforce this when there is a problem? Who's going to stop the contaminants? Who's going to do it? So far, no one in this town has stopped the problem where we are, except the EPA. They did it, but the police department, the selectmen and the other ones did nothing. They looked the other way. But the EPA, thank God for them, have really got after this person, find them, and they are doing something about it. Thank God for the Hampshire EPA.
That was a round of applause for you guys. Any other comments? Again, I'd like to thank our two senators, Senator Sherman and Senator Morgan for coming here, being informed with us as well. I thank you for coming out. I saw a lot of people take pictures of the website for the DES for information. It will be on our town's website. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact Peter Broderick, he will be able to assist you. He's our health officer. But other than that, thank you for coming out.
I'm not going to speak. My phone's going to be jumping out of it.